Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Welcome everyone to the annual town meeting on the Saturday, June 7th, 2025. At this time, I will collect the moderator slips.
Can you raise your hand if you were given a moderator slip? He filed it here.
The town has elected Peter Rice as moderator. Peter, if you could come up and mark the floor.
Is this working now? Can you hear me? Should be now. Well, who wired it up?
They know, no one else can hear it.
No one else can hear me?
No.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I, Peter Rice, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Maine, so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, Peter Rice, do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Maine. And no sign of that.
And now Peter will swear in the deputy moderator.
Deputy moderator, come here. Abby.
Yes, I, Abigail Julian, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, Abigail Julian, do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties incumbent on me as deputy moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and the laws of this state.
What else?
You're on.
Good morning. Thank you again for entrusting me to be the moderator of today's meeting. I'll do my best, but I need the cooperation and help of everyone here. Please turn off the cell phones and other communication devices except for the emergency breakups. I will be guided by the main moderator's manual. Send manual. Abby has been appointed as deputy moderator, and she will be present during the election on Tuesday. I want to review the guidelines, procedures, and methods of voting. Please speak only when recognized by me as the moderator. Address all questions when me as the moderator, not a member of the select board or town employee. You can ask me to put a question to any of them. Procedures, I will read the article and the explanation. I will let a motion to approve it. I'll last for a second. Discussion and the motion will then begin. Once discussion ends, we will vote. I will recognize you. If you're physically able, please stand. Let people know who you are, say your name, make you say that, ask your question. Also try to call those who have not had a chance to speak before recognizing someone who has already spoken. All of our items will be decided by a majority of those present. We have main allows for five different methods of voting. Employees vote, show of hand, resume vote, a vision of the house, written ballot. By the line, we're going to use this card. And then for written ballot, I think, depending on the town officials, they of course have forms that we can use. Article two is the election of two school board, two select board members and two members of the school board. We're not going to discuss those. But there's a candidate form at the end of this meeting, one of the last items. And everyone who is a candidate will get a chance to speak, and anyone who is a writing candidate will also have an opportunity to speak. Yes means you, okay, there is an ordinance. Articles four and five are ordinances. Yes means the town adopted the ordinance. No means the town does not give. We're not in a position to discuss the wording of the ordinance. Discussion and the voters want yes and no, but please remember that. Articles sixteen through seventeen and article nineteen are capped. That means the amount of the article is in the article itself. Voters may only decrease that amount. You cannot increase that amount. Article eighteen is by written ballot. Articles twenty-one through fifty-one are open. That means when there's a motion, please state the amount. The amount of, the motion has to include an amount of money associated with it. And then it, since it's not capped, it can be raised or it can be lowered. We can talk about that, but, so it's the. There's a recommendation, when the motion is made, the motion must include a dollar amount. Article fifty-two asks if the voters are willing to increase the property tax rate limit established by the town. This is also by written ballot. Article sixty-four asks if voters want to have a candidate form. Each person will be limited to three minutes. No candidate has to speak. Everyone who wants to run for any candidates will also be able to speak. Article sixty-two is, we will be adjourned until Tuesday, June ten for the election. And that was Abby will provide. Okay. One announcement. When you come up to speak, please come up here. I will hand you the mic. Please do not speak from the audience. We have a wire for everybody in here. David?
That's my phone.
Okay. Thank you. So, are we ready? What? There we go. Okay. Article three, to see if the town will vote to approve voting the four of this town meeting to all non-registered persons for the purposes of discussion only on each of the following articles of this fiscal year, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six warrant. It has to be passed by two-thirds. What I'm going to do is pass would be unanimous consent. If anybody objects to this, just say you object. You don't have to identify yourself, and we will vote on it. But hearing no objection, we will proceed. If anyone, if there are any objections to proceeding this way. Now, okay. Good, hang on. Oh. I didn't miss you, Donna, I thought I did. Article four, shell of ordinance entitled twenty twenty-five amendments to the growth management ordinance of the town of Shreve Island Maine regarding application procedures being enacted. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available for forereview, but available for review and inspection at the town office, and will all, is also available here. Have a motion, please. David? All right, Kevin, second. Dale, is the second. Discussion? Aaron?
I was the second.
Oh, okay.
I'm third, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Who seconded it?
Who seconded, Dale or R? D R R, B R A. Okay, all those in favor, raise your green card. Okay, opposed? Seeing none. The ordinance is adopted. Article five, shell of ordinance entitled twenty twenty-five amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Shreve Island Maine regarding parking and loading requirements being enacted. A copy of the proposed ordinance was available at the town office and is also available here. Have a motion? David?
I will fully adopt amendment two thousand twenty-five zoning ordinance of the town of Shreve Island.
Okay. Second? Dale. Thank you. Dale, all those seconded that motion. Any discussion? Mark?
I just wondered if we.
Can you come up here, please? Thank you. Hello?
Better than the hand.
Hello?
I just wondered if someone from the flying board could explain this very quickly. I wasn't able to handle that.
Thank you.
Aaron, you have plenty of work. This is a change that's required by state law, essentially LD two thousand three, the law that created accessory dwelling units mandates this, and we're just amending our ordinance to comply with state law.
All right, anybody else have any other comment? None.
This is probably a silly question, but what does this have to do with parking and loading deployments?
Aaron?
I just didn't know why it was in that section.
Under the LD two thousand three, which promotes the creation of accessory dwelling units, you can't have an ordinance that restricts your, that requires additional parking spaces to create a new accessory dwelling unit. So exempting accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling units from the parking requirement is mandated by state law to encourage the creation of accessory dwelling units and not permit or not require excessive or extra parking for those units.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Aaron. Okay. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed? Seeing none. The ordinance is adopted. Education budget articles. Article six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents for regular construction. Explanation. This is an eleven point seven four or sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cents decrease from the fiscal point, fiscal year twenty-five budget. The cost center includes salary benefits for two full-time teachers, the specialists are in music, and half of the associate teacher. It also provides the supplies and materials needed by teachers to deliver instructional program. These funds will also pay tuition for the middle and high school students to Yarnham, which is over fifteen thousand dollars for each student. The enrollment projection of fiscal year twenty-six of Shreve Island students enrolled in Yarnham is eleven students. This is a reduction of six students of twenty, twenty thousand, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Have a motion, Mark?
Peter, I'd like to make a motion to approve article six in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars, forty-nine cents.
Thank you. Kevin, second. Jeff? Discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Seeing none. It is adopted. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for special education. Explanation. This is a twenty-two percent increase or forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center includes the salary and benefits of staff and materials to pay for the cost of special education services as man, as mandated by students' individual educational plans. For the Shreve Island school, this includes continuing to fund full-time teacher and half of the associate teacher for fiscal year twenty-six, there's an additional full-time educational technician included. This also covers the cost of related services such as speech, language, and occupational services that some students receive. These funds also pay for the cost of education services for middle and high school students from Shreve Island School. Mark?
Peter, I'd like to make a motion to approve article seven in the amount of two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
Kevin, second. Jeff? Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? I mean, I'm doing article eight tonight, even though there's no money. Okay. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend no money for career and technical education. Mark?
Motion to approve article eight in the amount of zero dollars.
Jeff seconded it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend zero dollars for other construction. Mark?
Motion to approve article nine in the amount of zero dollars.
Second. Jeff, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, no opposition. It is adopted. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for student and support. The explanation, the explanation is this is a four point two nine percent or one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and two cents decrease from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center includes course reimbursements for Shreve Island school staff, library services for Shreve Island students, and support of social work of one day per week. Mark?
I'd like to make a motion to approve article ten in the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred, twenty-nine dollars, ninety-eight cents.
Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Article ten is adopted. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend a hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents for systems administration. This is a ten point three or thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-nine and four cents increase from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center includes the salary and benefits for the superintendent and half of the administrative assistant. It also includes operational costs for the school department, including insurance, phone, postage, printing, and advertising for open positions. Increases because of salary and down to the increase. Mark?
Motion to approve article eleven in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, thirty-four cents.
Okay. Kevin, second. Jeff? Discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Seeing none. Article eleven is adopted. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-four cents for school administration. Explanation, this is a nine point seven three percent increase or two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents increase from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This sub-cost center includes half of the salary and benefits for the administrative assistant as well as the site, as well as the site for the maintenance. It also includes other expenses at school office, including the cost of open supplies. Mark?
Motion to approve article twelve in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, seventy-four cents.
Thank you. Kevin, second. Jeff, thank you. Discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Seeing none. Article twelve passes. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents for transportation and buses. This is a twenty-seven point oh nine percent decrease or a decrease of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center includes the salary and benefits for the bus driver. It also includes a contract which should be a transportation company that takes for the transportation of middle and high school students to Yarnham as well as some travels, to, as well as staff to travel to school. The residual cost included for vehicle insurance, maintenance, and fuel. This is a decrease because of the reduced number of secondary students traveling to Yarnham and reduced staff and fuel costs on the new bus. Mark?
Motion to approve article thirteen in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars, fifty-nine cents.
Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Article fourteen is adopted. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents for facility maintenance. The explanation, this is a four point oh six decrease or a decrease of two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and forty-three cents from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The cost center include the salary and benefits for the custodial position. It also includes the cost associated with cleaning and maintaining the building and grounds, as well as electricity and fuel costs. This cost center also includes the cost of water test, of water testing and system. The school is no longer responsible for the care and upkeep of the fields. Mark?
Motion to approve article fourteen in the amount of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Seeing none. It is adopted. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents for debt service and other commitments. Explanation, this is a sixty-eight point two four percent decrease or a decrease of eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center includes the debt service for MSAD fifty-one for the expenses incurred before Shreve Island became independent. The amount owed was established by a bond with a security of the time. This is the final payment, and it is significantly reduced. It also includes the school department's contingency line. As a result of the reduced debt service payment, this cost center is down. Mark?
Motion to approve article fifteen in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, seventy-two cents.
Thank you. Jeff, second. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, well, this is the end. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents for all other expenditures. The explanation, it is a sixteen point eleven percent increase or an increase of five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This cost center. This cost centers for food service programming for the school. It includes the salary and benefits for the kitchen manager as well as supplies and other contracted costs associated with maintaining the kitchen such as the fire suppression system, compliance, maintenance, and required inspections and licenses. The increase is because of Shreve Island School enrollment and increased food cost. Mark?
Motion to approve Article XVI, Peter, for the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article XV is adopted. Article XVII. To see if the town will vote to appropriate six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. And see if the town will vote to raise five hundred and sixty-three dollars, three hundred and... Five hundred and sixty-three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents as the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with main revised statutes titled Twenty-A, Section One, Five, Six, Eight, Eight. The explanation. The town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act is the amount of money determined by state law to be the minimum amount the town must raise in excess in order to receive the full amount of state dollars. Mark?
Peter, I move to approve Article XV in the amount of six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, fifty-nine cents for total cost of funding and total cost to be raised by the town's taxpayer. Five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Good mark. Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Article XV is adopted. Now, Article eighteen is by written ballot. Becca passing up the ballots now. Article eighteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate for some of four hundred and fifty-six dollars, four hundred and fifty-six, five hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents an additional local fund which exceeds the state's essential program and services allocation model by four hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee? The school committee gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model. EPS does not fully support all necessary costs kindergarten, grade twelve education programs such as special education on very transportation plus cost, staff benefits including health insurance, fight of Medicare for unemployment, and worker compensation. The explanation. The additional local funds for those funds raised over and above the town's local contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act and local funds raised for the annual payment on non-state funded debt service that will help achieve town's budget for educational purposes. Mark?
Move to approve Article eighteen. Excuse me.
Yes?
Which article are we on?
Eighteen.
As written.
Jeff seconded. Okay. The ballot... Speaker? Okay. Please mark your ballots. Okay. Becca. Becca's in charge of that.
How about go ahead, ask them?
Thank you. Thank you. Does that... By the way? Isn't it something else? You have a question? All ballots are in? Anybody have settled the ballot? Okay. We're gonna wait until they... Time for ballots, so... If you want to get up and run, or go to nap or whatever. We have a couple minutes.
Take a nap?
Kind of a short nap, alright? The results are in. Seventy-one yaps. We know Article eighteen has passed. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-six from the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes on the main revised statutes, Article Twenty-A, Section One, Five, Six, Nine, Zero, unexpendanted balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of school. Mark?
Peter, motion to pass Article nineteen in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
Jeff seconded. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? In absence. Article Twenty. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs and other resources during the fiscal year for school and other program purposes provided that such grants or programs and other sources do not require re-expended to other fund not previously appropriated. The explanation. Shreve Island School received a grant from the government through the World Education Achievement Program. This money is used to ensure that Shreve Island School students have similar opportunities to mainland students. These experiences and receipts are paid for and reimbursed after evidence of the expenditure submitted. There may be other grants become available during the year. This article gives the school committee permission to apply for additional funding as it becomes available and spent appropriately. Mark?
Motion to approve Article Twenty as written.
Jeff seconded it. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article Twenty passes. Article Twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of the total appropriation of any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six fiscal year provided that transfers shall not be permitted to increase the authorized total school budget. The explanation. Although the school committee uses all information available to them in carrying a budget for future spending, there are times when a cost center is overspent. At the end of the fiscal year, no cost center can be overspent. If a cost center is overspent, this article means to correct the negative balance. The school committee must vote at their meeting to move money from one cost center to zero of the overspent cost center. Mark?
A motion to approve Article Twenty-one as written.
Thank you. Jeff seconded it. Discussion? Rich?
Oh, no. I was voting.
Oh. John?
Is that among...
John? 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 Is this properly written? It says amongst exceeding five percent. Should that be amongst not exceeding five percent? Anybody can answer that?
Good morning, Aaron Townsend Superintendent. Shreve Island Schools. It should be exceeding. The school committee has authority for below five percent to make transfers. So this is statutorily. If it's above that, it needs authorization.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none? Article Twenty-one is adopted. Municipal budget article. Article Twenty-two. To see what sum the town will vote to raise in appropriation for administration and select board accounts. The select board recommends... Excuse me. Three hundred and sixty dollars... Three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. The explanation. This is a seven-point-zero-five increase or an increase of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This increase is due to added costs for Ireland Institute of Health. Total increases in training costs. Mark?
A motion to approve Article Twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Come second? Dale? Dale seconded that. Discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Peter. I intend to vote in favor of this. But this is one department, in my opinion, that has had a significant increase in the last, I'm going to say, six to eight years. And I'm not saying that the select board or the administration is doing anything malicious or incorrectly, but I would ask that the select board and the administration take a look at possible efficiencies moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? One, two, three. Article Twenty-two is adopted. Article Twenty-three. To see what sum... To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the assessors. The select board recommends fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Explanation. No change from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Mark?
Motion to approve Article Twenty-three in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Come second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
Thanks, Peter. I have a question. Does this include just the salary for the assessor?
Who can answer that? Becca?
It's the salary and a couple other small expenses, but majority of it is the salary.
So my other question is, is there someplace else in here where we're saving money for a revaluation?
Reserve account. There's a reserve account with seventy-five thousand dollars in it for a revaluation.
Okay. Can I make a comment? When I see properties that I know people bought for very small amounts of money owing for a million dollars and I look at it and see what their tax commitment is, there's a certain unfairness in this community. We really need to make sure that our taxes, that everyone's paying attention.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Okay. Seeing none? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article Twenty... Twenty-three is adopted. Article Twenty-four. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for elections. The select board recommends three thousand dollars. The explanation. This is a two-hundred percent or a two-thousand dollar increase from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to reducing the minimum wages for the election workers. Mark?
Motion to approve Article Twenty-four in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Thank you. Come second, Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article Twenty-four is adopted. Article Twenty-five. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for planning. The select board recommends nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The explanation. This is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty-eight... Hundred twenty-six hundred, thirty, point thirty-eight percent increase or a five-point, five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollar increase. The increase is due to the annual cost of GIS mapping and the contracted services reviewed to update parcels, shoreline zoning, and online maps. Mark?
Motion to approve Article Twenty-five, Peter, in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Come second? Thank you, Dale. Discussion? Been seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Article Twenty-five is adopted. Article Twenty-six. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal services. The select board recommends twenty thousand dollars. This is a thirteen-point-oh-four percent or a three-thousand dollar decrease from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. An emotion, Mark?
Motion to approve Article Twenty-six in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Come second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
Am I correct in saying that we now are engaged with a different law firm?
The town has moved to, from Jensen Bear to Drummond and Whitson. The attorney, who has been our attorney, moved to that law firm because Jensen and Bear closed their municipal services.
And would it be safe to say that the town and the town... Select Board and town administrators pleased with this move?
Uh, yes.
That'd work.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article Twenty-six is adopted. Article Twenty-seven. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for law enforcement services. The select board recommends sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 26 is adopted. Article 27, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for law enforcement services, the select board recommends sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The explanation, this is a twenty-six point one five percent increase or an increase of thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This increase is due to the costs associated with the Commonwealth County Sheriff's Department contract, fuel costs, and expansion of parking attendant position. Mark?
Just a moderator, a question if I may.
Well, first let's get the motion on the floor. Have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 27, in the amount of sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, seven thousand dollars less, okay. Second, Dale, thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I'd like to explain the rationale and reason for my motion if I could.
Go for it.
I've been to every budget meeting this session. Most people know that I'm fairly involved with the town and I'm pretty aware of the operations of how things go. The proposed increase in here includes increasing the parking attendant part-time position from wages of nine thousand dollars a year to fourteen thousand dollars a year. It also increases the gasoline allowance for the Commonwealth County Sheriff's Department Patrol and the reimbursement of the parking enforcement position from an average of usage of about fifteen hundred dollars a year up to four thousand dollars a year. I don't think either one of these things is necessary at the point, at this point. And the reason I say that is, I don't believe the select board and the town have a great plan for how they're going to be handling parking enforcement in general. And in speaking with the sheriff department, the Commonwealth County Sheriff's Department is patrolling the top of the parking at the entrance to the hood, the end of James Road down at Sandy Point, Bed's Cove Beach and Bard Landing area, and possibly the Channel Cove. I think it would be double budgeting and double paying at this point, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Bob, please conduct. I'm Bob Reese, laying the duck on the select board with two days remaining. Parking is an issue for the island, and the select board has continued to make small changes in the parking order, which is the, one of the two elements of our town government that the select board can change without one of the town meeting. I think it's pretty clear we need more enforcement on several fronts. And I think it's pretty clear that it's very hard to find parking enforcement. These changes are designed to allow parking enforcement to happen at more times per day than a person who has a day job can execute. It's become clear that, in particular at the Stone Theater, some, some cars have gotten good at gaming the system, knowing when parking attendant is coming, parking there ten minutes later and thereby avoiding one day on their clock, if you will. But I think the select board has worked hard to try to figure out how to make parking better, more available for everybody. It's still going to be a scarce resource. We've struggled to find a person to fill that role. We now have another volunteer, not volunteer, we have another person who has stepped up to do it, not because they want to, but because they see a need. And that's what the most recent parking attendant has been, was a person who didn't want to do it, but saw the need to do it. I would recommend we keep that money in there. I would vote against this amendment to this ordinance. Thank you. So let me clarify. So you're saying, are you making a motion to bring Mark's motion to raise it by the seven thousand dollars?
Speaking against Mark's motion.
Okay. Got it. Any other comments? David?
Thank you. I'd just like to second what Bob said and point out that there will be another vote if this is rejected at this amount, and we will be going back to the recommended amount for a select.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote whether the, to appropriate sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for one. Has that been seconded?
Yes. Anybody clear on that? Okay. All those in favor, vote yes, raise your card. Vote no.
No, 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 hold on, we're gonna need to count this one.
Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, raise your card again, please.
In favor of sixty thousand.
Yes, in favor of Mark's motion, yes, sixty thousand. Okay. Okay, opposed? Okay, two? Anyhow.
Okay, they're good. Twenty-five, yes, thirty-six, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-five, yes, thirty-six, no.
Okay. The tally is twenty-five, twenty-five votes in favor, thirty-six votes against. The motion, the article is not adopted. Okay, Article 28, to see.
You still have to go back to vote on Article 27.
Excuse me?
You still have to go back and vote on.
Oh, yeah, we have to vote, we voted, never mind. I thought we voted on whether it was going to be sixty thousand dollars.
Yes, and it was, it wasn't passed, so now that article is still.
Okay.
Needed to be voted on something.
Voting on, can you give the larger amount?
Yeah, I just got rejected, so somebody needs to make a motion to vote whether it's for the recommended amount or a different amount, but Article 27 still needs to be voted on.
Okay. David?
I move that we approve Article 27, in the amount of sixty-seven, sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay. Second? Eliza? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor of voting yes for sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five, raise your card. Okay, all those, voting yes, raise your card, please. Okay, it passes. Okay, Article 27 then is adopted in the recommended amount. Article 28, to see what town, what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for fire and rescue, the select board recommends a hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. The explanation is an eight point one two, eight point twelve percent or a twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollar increase from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. This increase is due to added costs of equipment, supplies, and gear. Mark?
Peter, I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 28, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you. Second? Eliza? Sorry about that. Discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Seeing none, Article 28 is adopted. Article 29, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for code enforcement, the select board recommends sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The explanation, this is a seven point nine percent for a forty-six, forty-six hundred dollar increase from fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is to reflect the senior positions salary costs. Mark?
Peter, I'd like to make a motion to pass Article 29, in the amount of sixty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I'd like to explain my motion. I think we have good code enforcement these days. I think it's important to have good code enforcement these days. But I don't think that the amount of pay increase and the amount of hours proposed are going to be able to be fulfilled in this position. And my motion allows plenty of money, in my opinion, to accomplish this position. It allows a thousand dollars a week of wages times fifty-two weeks or fifty-two thousand dollars in wages, plus the extra money in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Ursch?
I would recommend that we pass the article that has budgeted the amount in question, the salary amount, is the same salary that we contracted with when we first hired our code officer. That was in the middle of the prior, the budget year we were just leaving. And the amount that we contracted the new code officer for was more than we had in that budget year, but because we had a gap where nobody was getting the pay, we were able to honor that contract in the current budget year. This amount simply brings the budget amount for the upcoming fiscal year to the amount that we contracted when we first hired the code officer. This does not represent a raise for the code officer, it simply executes the contract that the select board signed a year and a half ago, a year ago, never was. We had a long and storied history with contract officers, and I would suggest that we are in the best position now that we've been in since we've been in town. And I would suggest also that we've done a lot of research on what code officers get paid. The amount that is in the article as written is entirely appropriate. So, Peter, can you clarify, am I, would I be best to recommend an amendment to Mark's or simply recommend to vote against it?
Correct.
Recommend to vote against it. So I recommend if we vote against Mark's amendment. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're gonna vote on whether to approve sixty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for Article 29 for code enforcement. All those in favor, raise your cards. Opposed? Okay, the noes have it. Any other motions? David?
I move that we approve Article sixty-nine, excuse me, Article 29, in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for code enforcement.
Okay, second? Eliza? Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 25 is adopted. Article 27, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal services, the select board recommends four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The explanation, this is no change from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to change in the harbor master's hours as well as removal of the tech, of technology costs. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 30, Peter, in the amount of eighteen thousand fifty dollars.
Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I'd like to vote in favor of this motion and this article. For years, I was on the board and I backed this position to try to, hope that we could get a good value back to the taxpayers. I'm not sure we have succeeded in that. I believe this is another area where the select board needs to revisit this department to see what kind of value and cost should be attached or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 30 is adopted. Article 31, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal control, the select board recommends four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The explanation, this is no change from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to added costs in contracted services for float installation, removal, maintenance, and needed building maintenance. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 31, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I would just like to clarify the explanation a tiny bit. There has been an increase in this department of around thirty-two thousand dollars, but eighteen thousand of that is actually in full-time and part-time wages, not just for the cost of the marine infrastructure maintenance and the equipment, building maintenance. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 32 is adopted. Article 32, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public services, the board recommends, the select board recommends two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. The explanation, this is a sixteen point six five percent increase or an increase of thirty-two thousand five hundred and twelve dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to added costs in contracted services for float installation, removal, maintenance, and needed building maintenance. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 32, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I would just like to clarify the explanation a tiny bit. There has been an increase in this department of around thirty-two thousand dollars, but eighteen thousand of that is actually in full-time and part-time wages, not just for the cost of the marine infrastructure maintenance and the equipment, building maintenance. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 32 is adopted. Article 33, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for solid waste, the select board recommends two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. This is the explanation, this is a four point one four percent decrease or a decrease of ten thousand and twelve dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The decrease is due to adjustments to parking and hauling. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 33, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I would just like to clarify the explanation a tiny bit. There has been an increase in this department of around thirty-two thousand dollars, but eighteen thousand of that is actually in full-time and part-time wages, not just for the cost of the marine infrastructure maintenance and the equipment, building maintenance. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 32 is adopted. Article 33, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for solid waste, the select board recommends two hundred and, two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. This is the explanation, this is a four point one four percent decrease or a decrease of ten thousand and twelve dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The decrease is due to adjustments to parking and hauling. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 33, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I'd like to vote in favor of this motion and this article. For years, I was on the board and I backed this position to try to, hope that we could get a good value back to the taxpayers. I'm not sure we have succeeded in that. I believe this is another area where the select board needs to revisit this department to see what kind of value and cost should be attached or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 30 is adopted. Article 31, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal control, the select board recommends four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The explanation, this is no change from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to added costs in contracted services for float installation, removal, maintenance, and needed building maintenance. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 31, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion?
I'm just wondering, given that we're all handed the thing about the plovers and watching the dogs, whether they're off-leash or not, if the budget was written before this came to be, and we didn't have a third nest, fourth nest now on Sandy Point, you need more. It's more support for animal people, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know who can answer that. Peter?
Currently, as the position stands, it is a stifled, very part-time position, so the current code enforcement officer has done to his best abilities to fulfill all of the extra hype as a result of the plovers joining us. The sheriff's department is assisting in that as well. So it would really need to go back to a select board discussion about changing the position and have salary accommodated for what the new job description position would be.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 30 means is adopted. Article 32, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public services, the board recommends, the select board recommends two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. The explanation, this is a sixteen point six five percent increase or an increase of thirty-two thousand five hundred and twelve dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The increase is due to added costs in contracted services for float installation, removal, maintenance, and needed building maintenance. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 32, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I would just like to clarify the explanation a tiny bit. There has been an increase in this department of around thirty-two thousand dollars, but eighteen thousand of that is actually in full-time and part-time wages, not just for the cost of the marine infrastructure maintenance and the equipment, building maintenance. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 32 is adopted. Article 33, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for solid waste, the select board recommends two hundred and, two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. This is the explanation, this is a four point one four percent decrease or a decrease of ten thousand and twelve dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The decrease is due to adjustments to parking and hauling. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 33, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second? Dale? Thank you. Discussion? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 30 means is adopted. Article 32, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public services. The board recommends, the select board recommends $227,792. The explanation, this is a 16.65% increase or an increase of $32,512 in fiscal year 25 budget. The increase is due to added costs in contracted services for float installation, removal, maintenance, and needed building maintenance. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 32 in the amount of $227,792.
Okay, thank you. Second? Gail, thank you. Discussion? Mark?
I would just like to clarify the explanation a tiny bit. There has been an increase in this department of around $32,000. But $18,000 of that is actually in full-time and part-time wages, not just for the cost of the marine infrastructure maintenance and the equipment building maintenance. Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 32 is adopted. Article 33, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for solid waste. The select board recommends $231,792. This is the explanation, this is a 4.14% decrease or a decrease of $10,120 from the fiscal year 25 budget. The decrease is due to adjustments to margin and hauling. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 33 in the amount of $231,792.
Have a second? Gail, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, I'm hoping Mike.
I'm Mike McGee. I just wanted to point out that the solid waste, Article 33, $231,000, is very similar to Article 32 in cost of $227,000. And yet, I think over the next year, there's gonna be a lot of discussions about charging per bag of garbage. So if you have two articles that are about the same, 231 and 227, should we also be talking about charging per every time you set foot on a float? Or something like that is contained in Article 32. So I'm for Article 33, but I just wanted the town to be aware that when we talk about cost of solid waste, it's pretty much balanced with the cost of the public services right above it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I have.
Okay, go ahead, Vika.
I just wanna clarify, there is currently no plan set in place to do per bag charge. So I wanna make that clear. It is one area that the town is exploring, but there's no plans to implement anything at all for the upcoming year.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor? Bob, all right. Did not see your hand.
That's a small hand.
Good answer, good answer. Just wanted to point out that the select board did discuss several times the concept of user fees as opposed, as respect, in respect to the punt floats and the congestion down there. That's why the conversation came up. And the select board, after that discussion, decided that in their opinion, we're a maritime community. And while there are things where a policy of user fees, we believe that in that discussion makes sense for this community, that the use of the floats, given our heritage, given our location, was not appropriate. So it has been discussed in public. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Donna?
Historically, when those floats were put in at the Stone War, there were tie-up fees. Have we done away with the tie-up fees?
Okay, we're talking about solid waste in this article.
Yeah, I know.
The public services is already voted on. So Bob's comment and Donna's comment are really out of order. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I am trying to. Any other questions or comments about solid waste? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, it's adopted. Article 33 is adopted. Article 34, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Cousins Island Dock Reserve Fund. The select board recommends $24,847. The explanation, this is a 4% increase or an increase of $994 of the fiscal year 25 budget. For agreement with the town of Yarmouth, this reserve fund is for the sole purpose of providing for their maintenance, capital repairs, and eventual replacement of the Cousins Island Dock and/or improvements on the work road as described with agreement with Yarmouth. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 34, Peter, in the amount of $24,847.
Thank you, have a second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 34 is adopted. Article 35, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for contributions. The select board recommends $185,597, authorizing the select board to disperse the full amount according to this table. I'm not going to read the table unless anybody wants me to. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 35 in the amount of $185,597.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. What? Second, okay, sorry, I'm second. My fault. Second, it's moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 35 is adopted. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a total of $5,000 for contribution to Chubig Island and Cumberland Land Trust and Indian Island Company to help fund the construction of a new and safer public access trail to the shore and sandbar. The explanation, the town no longer has an agreement with the Hook or to the Hook, therefore cannot use public money without the express consent of the town. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 36 in the amount of $5,000.
Thank you. Aliza?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Ralph?
Ralph, I was wondering if any of those monies, sorry, any of the monies for the association has been put aside a thought, been put aside for upon on Littlefield Road that is built in since it's been in care of land custody and still will, still longer used?
Okay, any other questions, comments? Donna?
When I read this article, I think it is the same, in the same category as the ones we just voted on for Chubig Island Library, the Community Center, Life Flight, Island Councils, Chubig Recreation Center, Kids Place, and the Island Commons, which are all nonprofits. The Land Trust has been a nonprofit on Chubig, actively working to preserve land as a partner with the town since 19, about 1987 or 88, when we got into the little supply issue. I personally worked with the Land Trust as one of the founders and Indian Island Company to 15 years to secure public access down there as well as with the town of Cumberland when we did enter into that agreement. The reason the town entered into the agreement, if you can go back in the town records to 19, to 1850, 1851 and 1874, and you'll find that the town road, which is the North Road, began at the Hook. And it went up around where Susie Steveropoulos lives, and it was relocated in the early 1800s. That road description was not recorded when it was changed. And so that is why initially the town got into that agreement. I understand there's no parking alley anymore, but there is public access that was ensured in the Land Trust agreement in the compensation easement, which will ensure the people of Chubig can go down through there forever and give the access to the public to Chubig. $5,000 is a minor amount for the town to stay in the game in that area. That is one of the most used areas. How many people, I'm gonna ask people to raise their hands, have walked along Chubig. And so that in itself is a reason how to be safe. We have no control over what has happened in the storms, but we do have control in making that safe for our children and for our grandchildren and for the future residents of Chubig. I hope you'll join me in voting. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments, any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Seeing none, Article 36 is adopted. Article 37, to see whether the town will authorize the additional donation of municipal employee time and materials for the occasional snow plowing and/or sanding of parking lots of the Chubig Recreation Center, Kids Place, Channel Four, and Island Commons during significant weather events. Explanation, these properties are not town-owned, so it's unlawful to use public money to support their operation. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 37 as written.
Gail, thank you. Seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 37 is adopted. Article 38, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general assistance. The select board recommends $500. This is no change from the fiscal year 25 budget. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 38, the amount of $500.
Thank you. Gail, seconded. Discussion? Seeing? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Seeing none, Article 38 is adopted. Article 39, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for health services. The select board recommends $2000. The explanation, this is no change from the fiscal year 25 budget. This is to pay for the duly appointed health offices. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 39 in the amount of $2000.
Thank you, have a second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Mark, don't move, he wanna talk. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 39 is adopted. Article 40, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the cemetery. The select board recommends $13,512. Explanation, this is a 2.79% or $388 decrease from the fiscal year 25 budget. The decrease is due to a decrease in contracted services. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 40 in the amount of $13,512.
Thank you, have a second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 40 is adopted. Article 41, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service. The select board recommends $455,331. The explanation, this is an 84% decrease or a decrease of $3,874 from the fiscal year 25 budget. $200,000, $200,358 for the main municipal bond bank debt from the succession payment held to the town of Cumberland. $112,551 for the main municipal bond bank debt from the school construction project. $21,249 from the main municipal bond bank debt from the plow truck. $447,809 from the main municipal bond bank debt for dredging. And $74,584 of main municipal bond bank debt for broadband. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 41, Peter, in the amount of $455,331.
Thank you, second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Chris?
Mr. Moderator, Article 41 includes a debt service payment of $74,584 for broadband. This budget also includes the same amount on the revenue side of Article 51 in 2024. There's a debt service payment of $58,761. And in 2025, $78,137. This totals approximately $137,000. However, in those two years, there was no corresponding revenue payment to offset the debt services. Would taxpayers expect to see additional revenue in the 2027 budget to cover this gap? Or would this be the extension of revenue payments until all debt is paid? And I recognize that may be out of order on the revenue side.
Thank you. Anybody comment on that? Michael or Vika?
Yeah, so the debt that we took on as a community, we are responsible to pay for. There was an agreement between Acxiom and the town that was voted on at town meeting. And in that agreement, when Acxiom started collecting revenue is when they would start paying off the debt, which is why the previous two years, that was not in the revenue because there was a delay in the project and revenue was not collected on their end. We have received some of that money to recoup the previous years. I mean, for the current year, we are working on trying to receive the rest of it. But what we are budgeting for is the debt and then the revenue that's anticipated based on the contract. And any additional from previous year will be additional revenue in the budget.
Critical comment? Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Michael?
I want to just end on this side. Okay, thank you. Okay, I agree with Vika, said I just wanna add one, one point, that the payments actually do not stop when the bond is paid off. So at the end of that period of paying, the contract says an equivalent amount. So that there's no possibility, we will continue to recoup the cost. We hope we get them earlier, but the money will keep coming in. So I think that's not too much of an issue.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 41 is adopted. Article 42, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for benefits and insurance. The select board recommends $265,856. The explanation, this is a 30.7% or a $61,465 increase from fiscal 25 budget. The increase is because of new employees' health insurance costs, benefits, and liability insurance. Mark?
Move to approve Article 42, Peter, in the amount of $265,856.
Have a second, please. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 42 is adopted. Article 43, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for streetlights. The select board recommends $8,400. The explanation, this is no change from the fiscal year 25 budget. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 43 in the amount of $8,400.
Thank you, have a second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article 43 is adopted. Article 44, to see what sum the town will vote to raise or bring and authorize the select board to spend for unexpected expenses as they be necessary from under-signed fund balance. Select board recommends $30,000. This is no change from the fiscal 25 budget. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 44 in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you, have a second. Gail, thank you. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? One? Okay. Article 44 is adopted. Article 45, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for payments to the town of Cumberland for 50% of other island tax. The, the select board recommends $56,935, although this is definitely an estimate. The explanation is, as required in law, allowing Chubig to secede from the town of Cumberland. This article was incorporated $50,000 of property tax committed by the town of Chubig Island from the outer islands. Mark?
Motion to approve Article 45 in the amount of $56,935 estimated.
Thank you, Gail, I seconded, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Seeing none, Article forty-five is adopted. Article forty-six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for county tax. The select board recommends two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is a nine point zero five percent increase or an increase of nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Assess to the municipal, assess to the municipality by Cumberland County. Mark?
Motion to approve Article forty-six, Peter, in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Thank you. I'm a second. Gail? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article forty-six is adopted. Article forty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to exceed no more than ten percent annually the amount of authorized, Vika Thomas approved in Article twenty-two, though Article approved in Article twenty-two through Article forty-six above. As so long as the overall amount spent for the sum total of those articles does not exceed the total appropriation approved for those articles. Mark?
Motion to approve Article forty-seven as written.
Thank you. Second, Gail? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article forty-seven passes. Article forty-eight, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for capital improvement. The select board recommends raising seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. The explanation, this is a thirty-nine point seven three percent increase or an increase of two hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. The table below shows the sum recommended by the select board for each capital account. The purpose of the capital account appropriation is to set aside funds for future infrastructure investment as well as vehicle and equipment expenditures. This reduces and avoids a large one-time appropriation for major expenses in the future. I'm not going to read the table unless someone asks me to. Mark?
Motion to approve Article forty-eight in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Second, Gail? Thank you. Ralph?
I have a question about ninety thirty-one. Since put ten thousand dollars to the renovation and or build and renovate the existing town office. We just renovated it. We needed to put money aside for that. But we also kind of got a line in there for replacing the five six million. If you give an explanation for that.
You can? I'm a second. Vika?
The new building relative to the town and office, that's not for necessarily the existing. That's also setting money aside for future town office renovations. Where things stand currently, Facilities Committee has been working to design and propose a future plan to have a new fire department build across the street from the existing building. And the existing building be renovated further down the road into a town office. So that's what that line item is. And then there is no specific reserve account set for a new fire department building. But there is, the fire department reserve account is general to also having some of, some of that money reserved for that. But currently, majority of the money that's being recommended is for a fire truck replacement. And that money has been set aside every year for the last couple of years.
Ralph? You ready for that?
No.
No other comments? Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Article forty-eight is adopted. I lost my card. Thank you. I don't vote anymore. Article forty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate all funds raised for the overlay fund, overlay to fund any act of aid and increase for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five to twenty-two, twenty-six. This article allows the use of funds from the overlay calculated by the excess of the mill rate set to be used for any evasions, including any increase. Mark?
Motion to approve Article forty-nine as written.
Okay, I'm a second. Gail? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article forty-nine is adopted. Article fifty, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate from underwritten fund balance surplus to reduce the tax burden for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five to twenty-two, twenty-six. The select board recommends a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The explanation, a transfer from underwritten fund balance is made to manage the fund balance and to help lower the tax rate. The allowable limits, sixty percent to twenty-five percent, are based on the select board's underwritten fund balance policy. In accordance with this policy, the recommended use of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars towards fiscal year twenty-six budget is to reduce taxation. Mark?
Motion to approve Article fifty, Peter, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you. Second. Gail? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, Article fifty passes. Article fifty-one, to see what sum the town will vote to take from receipts, sources, and designations to apply against fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five to twenty-six appropriation and to accept and appropriate any such funds from the state of Maine and the U.S. government as provided by the state legislature or federal government for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five to twenty-two, twenty-six. The select board recommends two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And the total revenues from receipts and sources and designation include two hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Not going to read the table. Mark?
Motion to approve Article fifty-one in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars nine hundred and fifty-nine.
Thank you. Second. Gail? Thank you. Discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, Article fifty-one passes. Article fifty-two is by written ballot, because passing of the ballot now, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established for the town of Shabig Island by thirty A M R S A section five, seven, two, one, A. If the municipal budget approved under preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. I need a motion. Mark?
Motion to approve Article fifty-two as written, Peter.
Thank you. Gail? Second. And you, please complete your written ballot. And we'll take a little break. You've got us more than discussion.
Can someone explain this to me? I, I maybe I'm just numb. Is this something we do every year or is this?
Yes.
And what, what is the implication of this? Yes, I see. If I had an implication?
When we're in the future, right? Vika, did you get a question?
No, sorry.
Okay. She wants to ask what the implication of this is?
Um, this question got raised last year too. It's, it's something, where is it? The property tax let me establish for the town. It's more or less a article that is recommended by the town attorneys to make sure that the municipality stays within their accepted or anticipated tax commitment.
Okay. All right. Okay with that? Any other discussion? Gail?
Hi, I'm just, I'm Yellerar. And I'm just wondering if this means that there is no limit on how much our taxes can be raised?
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
What you're voting on by each individual article right now are your limits and your caps for each of those departments. And there is an article that also was voted on that says that if any of those departments succeed, the municipality cannot exceed by more than ten percent. And if it is going to happen, a town meeting vote needs to be decided to allow for that to happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Has everyone voted? We need to plug the ballots. We've got a little break.
They just googled it. It asked me about the time in Tokyo, starved the new house. So, very helpful.
So, Trey, I have a question. So, we are trying to, probably. What's the challenge? But, uh, the, the, the ordinance, the, the, they refer to this other fifty page, which is, uh, things, three feet.
Okay. Article fifty-two, sixty-four, yes, seven, no. Article sixty, five, Article fifty-two passes. Okay. Article fifty-three, to save the town will vote to authorize the select board to negotiate and enter leases for vehicles for town use and appropriate funds for vehicle reserve capital account to pay the annual cost of such leases. Five. I'd like to move that we group Articles fifty-three through sixty for one vote. Ray can the second?
Second.
Who said that?
I did.
Okay, Phil, thank you. Discussion? All right. This is just, right now, the, the motion is to group them. We haven't voted on yea or nay yet, but it was to group them. All those in favor of combining fifty-three through sixty, raise your card. Opposed? Two. Okay. We're gonna group them. Okay. All those in favor of passing Articles fifty-three through sixty?
We would have to, we would need a motion for those.
Yeah, we need a motion for those. Mark, come on. Just lacking.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Articles fifty-three through sixty.
And taking the second?
Second.
Phil, thank you. Discussion?
Will you give your reasons?
No. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Two. Okay? So now we're on Article sixty-one. Okay. Article sixty-one, to see if the council votes to conduct a candidate for an here and now, allow voters your statements from candidates if they wish to make a statement for the office of selectmen or select board and school committee. Candidates whose names appear on the ballot as well as those represented would be in writing, candidate's heat status limited to three minutes. Explanation, town adopted the secret ballot election and voting method on November nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. This means that the election of both the select board and the school committee members shall be conducted by secret ballots at the voting polls on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, rather than during the open town meeting. Although any party interested in being elected may speak, no nominations are accepted as part of this forum, or candidate's name appear on ballot, he or she must have filed nomination papers in accordance with Title thirty-eight named by statute, indicated section twenty-five, twenty-eight. Mark?
Motion to approve Article sixty-one as written.
Second, Gail. Okay. We have three candidates.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Discussion?
Uh, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Sorry about that. Form, form that, procedure that. Okay, we have three candidates for, for select board, so those three, do those three candidates before one to speak. I don't know if I can jump to a particular order.
Does the board declare a vision of three candidates for how many seats?
Two. Any of the, select board candidates wanting to speak?
I'll speak.
Okay. We have three minutes.
Okay? All right, thank you. First off, thanks to everyone who came to the candidate's night. I thought that was a great event. We got asked some questions. We got to give our explanations of how we thought. I thought that was very good. Only have three minutes, so I just want to highlight a couple of things. Since candidate's night, I've been approached a couple of times to ask, did I really say that I hate lobster? The answer is no, of course not. I don't hate lobster. I don't hate fish. The comment that was made was, what does it take to develop a sustainable year-round community? And my answer was, one of the bases of it, pillars of it, is good paying jobs. You have to have jobs out here that have livable wages, such as lobster and fisherman. Because those are actual livable wages that you can raise a family on. So that was my point. I do not hate lobstermen. I do not hate fishermen. I know there's a lot of rumors out there about me, but if you want to know something, ask me. Another reason I'm, I'm running, you know, we just skipped over Article fifty-nine, and I wasn't quick enough again to check it. But if you look at Article fifty-nine, we all just voted to not accept property that had foreclosed to the taxes. And the concern was that it has environmental problems. Okay? So I'm running for stuff like this. If we just voted not to accept the property because of environmental problems, and we all draw from the same single, single source aquifer and freshwater lens, we, as a town, just kind of turned our back on this problem. You can't do that. We have to address this problem because whatever property this is, and whatever environmental problem it's gonna be, it's gonna seep down into our freshwater supply from the island, and we're all gonna have to deal with it. So I'm running so that we can get some action done, address things head-on. I have no fear of addressing things head-on. Thank you.
Order. There's a small suggestion. Once people come up, you can do a step. Everybody running for office, if they don't stop by saying your name, get out of the business.
I am at Michael E., one oh seven Cottage Road. I think the majority of people know that, but good idea.
Pass by the name, someone who knows.
Yarhart?
I did.
Did you ever say your name?
Yep. Yarhart Road, four eighty-four North Road. And so, our family's been property owners since nineteen seventy-seven. I came back for today. I started my foot on the island. I wanted to live here, and now it's been ten years, actually, celebrating this coming month. So very excited for that. We're busy raising kids for a while, but now they are all launched, and I'm looking for the opportunity to serve, should I be selected to be on a lot of members of the select board. I mentioned the candidate's night, and I spoke there. Thank you for those who came. I just want to say that I recognize that there are many issues we're all facing, but things that are really gonna be important is communication and drawing from our whole population of inputs, ideas, thoughts, and the principles that would, that I would use to guide my input and work and opinions would be really those of sustainability, sustaining the community that we love while dealing with the challenges of changing times and issues, and then resiliency. I think we need, like I mentioned at the meeting, that we've got this group out here right now, that'll be doing some brush cleaning and stuff. So preparing us, preparing our island in many different ways, whether it's environmentally, such as the aquifer, or, or fire hazards, or economically in terms of the future of our jobs, and the grant situation, grant funding that may or not be available in the future. I think we have to really become more resilient, and the community is gonna take all of us participating. So my commitment is to work hard and to represent all of you on the select board, should you choose to select me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now?
Chair White, two fifty North Road, and I'm currently on the select board and, and running again. And part to provide some continuity to the board for some of these large projects we're working on. So South Shore Drive, the Stone Pier, and the large landing at Venice Cove are all pretty significant projects, and since I've been involved in them, I'm also hoping to, if, if elected, I would probably continue working on those. I think we, we've made some improvements as, in the past few years on the board. I think we have a lot of challenges, some fiscal, some community. I, similar to Yarhart, I'm committed to the sustainability of the island, and I think the year-round community is fragile, and I think we need to kind of think about our best ways to try to maintain a year-round community if that's important to the island. And so I've learned a lot of working on the board, and I would bring what I do know to, to another term. I did also want to make a shout-out while I'm standing up here. So we have this group team Rubicon, and the May Forest Service over here doing some wildfire mitigation work on Deer Point and some other areas on the island. And they're all volunteers. They're a veterans group of volunteers that do disaster response. They'll be here for dinner tonight, and I encourage the community to join us for dinner and thank them for their work. And also Ken Nelson, who's with the May Forest Service, who's really taken the islands under his wing and is committed to trying to reduce wildfire danger for particularly for Maine's islands. The other thing that I wanted to mention is on the nineteenth, and there's some fires out on the back table, there's a community workshop on cultural resilience and what that looks like for Chabik in terms of potential land use changes, or just in general, how we want to really look at cultural resilience. I think we're all a little bit more concerned about it since the storms in January twenty-four, and certainly for the town, it's been a huge, a huge expense, and it's taken up a significant amount of time for the select board to deal with, and now it's kind of falling true onto the planning board. So they'll be dealing with a lot of storm-related impacts. And I don't know, Vika, can we say, can, can I give people the good news? So I do want to say thanks in part and mostly to Vika's very persistent efforts. The town just received their funding from FEMA, which is one point?
Two million dollars.
One point two million dollars. And I take your credit for that. I, Vika's been, Vika and Vod's spent a lot of time working on that. We are way ahead of some of the other towns that are still kind of mired in the paperwork. But anyway, that is great news, both financially but also for some of these projects, because we'll be able to move forward on mitigating some of the storm damage. So, thank you.
What time is for dinner tonight?
Dinner tonight is at six o'clock at the hall. And it's sort of a, we have quite a bit of food coming, but you're welcome to bring something. There's no charge for dinner, but we really look like to have the community show up for this great group of volunteers that we have.
Thank you. Okay. That's all they announced. Are there any, what, writing candidates from the select board that want to speak? Okay. I do understand there are individuals who are running for the school committee, who are running as writing candidates. Do any of them want to speak? Elizabeth?
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Elizabeth Dowdy, and I am running, running to be a writing candidate for the school committee. I've had three years on the school committee in the past, with my final year being the chair, and while I was on the board, I was helping with developing a plan for making children to come over, to not only help with sustainability, but to also optimize the socialization for our island children. So my goal, if I am elected, is to continue working on that plan so that our children are set for success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Harley, eight two oh four North Road. I lived on Chabik for twenty years. Most recently, I've been a member of the Kids Place Committee, and in the fall, my daughter starts pre-grad. I should be out of school, very excited. Parents seem very happy with the education their students receive at the school, and I'd like to be part of maintaining that. I understand there's great responsibility, fiscal responsibility, challenges to sustaining our small but mighty school. It's also important to me to keep our great relationship with Yarmouth for the older students. So, thank you. And I wanted to congratulate all the families with graduates this weekend. Very well done.
Anybody else? Anyone else want to speak? One of the writing candidate? You're not seeing any? We'll move on to Article sixty-two, to adjourn the annual town meeting until June tenth, twenty twenty-five at eight a.m. So the secret ballots for local elections are Article two, maybe held on Chabik Island, at the Chabik Island Hall Community Center, two forty-seven South Road, and then after the closing of the poll at eight p.m. and the announcement of the results by the jet rating moderator to adjourn the town meeting. Mark?
Move Article sixty-two as written.
Thank you. Have a second? All right. It's not available. All those in favor want to go home.